Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board's special meeting on the budget. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting concerns our budget for the 2024-2025 year. It's fairly simple and straightforward. We'll have a presentation on the budget by our Finance Director. And after that, we will open the public hearing for their comments. When we get through their comments, we'll close the public hearing, come back to the Board for final comments and review. So with that, Teresa, I'll turn it over to you.
So I wanted to welcome the Board and the audience to the 2024-2025 budget presentation for the public hearing. The first thing that we're going to look at is our greatest source of revenue throughout the township, which is our property taxes. On the first slide, there's a comparison of the total taxable values over the last 13, 14 years. The -- so it's increased by 5%. So throughout the budget, we've used $770 million of taxable value compared to $733 million for the current year that we're in now. The next slide is a detail of our estimated millage rates. The last two columns are the actual millage rates for 2023. And then in the middle is the proposed--
Excuse me, Teresa. Can we get that a little sharper?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just on a slide.
Zoom in if you want.
That's a little better, I think.
Okay.
Move it around.
Okay. So the middle column here for proposed 2024 tax levy, we're estimating that the levy throughout the township will be unchanged from 2023. We do have two millages that expired in 2023, so they'll be up for renewal during this calendar year during 2024, which is the police -- one of the police operating millages, one mill, and a fire operating millage. So those are estimates with a note that they are subject to renewal this year, but they are needed for the operations of the township for police and fire. The only difference between 2024 and 2025 is for the SSES debt and the judgment bonds. Those are to be determined, and those are estimated to be significantly less than they have been up until this year. So -- and I'm going to talk about that more at the end of the presentation and go over our bonded debt. And that is -- the final calculation is still to be done, but estimate based on the remaining principal and interest payments should show a reduction in the taxable value. So the total mills for 2023 were 15.99. The estimated total mills for 2024 is 13.97.
I'm sorry. I'm a little late on this. Where are the mills dropping off mostly? I missed that.
I'm sorry?
I think you said SSES is the main reason the mills are dropping off.
And the judgment bonds.
Oh, the judgment bonds. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
The next slide shows a comparison over the last 10 years of our total township millages. So you can see with the 2024 estimated millages and the reduction because of the state revolving loan debt and the judgment bonds that it will go down. It's probably the -- it'll be the lowest that it's been since before 2012. So overall, budget assumptions that were used throughout all the funds and departments in the township, the comparison that's in the budget document is a comparison of the 2024 proposed budget to the 2023-2024 original budget. There have been some budget amendments during this fiscal year, and I will have another set of budget amendments at the March 25 meeting. The 2024 taxable value is used with $770 million with a 5% increase. The millage rates are the same as 2023, except for the decreases in the judgment bond levy and the SSES debt levy. Overall, the salary increases throughout the township budget were based on wage scales in the union contracts, and 2.5% cost of living adjustments and market adjustments for non-union full-time employees. And the 2.5% cost of living adjustment is consistent with the increases in the union contracts. Health insurance, we operate under Public Act 152, which is the hard cap. So every year, the state of Michigan does an increase to that hard cap, and that's the maximum that we can pay per person for health insurance. So for 2024, that increased 4.1%. The minimum MERS retirement cost increase is 7.3% between the two fiscal years. And we estimated an 8% increase in our property and liability insurance, which is allocated among the departments. We don't have -- our renewal is in May, so I don't have the final figures yet for that. So the next slide is a comparison of the general fund of the township. The overall budget increased by $404,720. The biggest increase in the revenue is on the first line, and I have more detail on that on the next slide. The COVID funds, we are nearing the end of utilizing our COVID funding, so there is no more funding that would be allocated to the general fund. And the other items, the 33rd District Court revenue, you can see, is lower. That's because the actual revenue that we're getting from the court has been trending that where it's below the expenditures. If you look at the differences in the expenditures, most departments are relatively small. The biggest increases were in the Police Department and the general professional services of the general fund. So the total of two of those make up about 71% of the total increase of $404,000. And we'll go into more detail of what makes those up. Everything else is less than a 10% increase. So the next slide is more of a detail of that first line on the comparison, which itemizes what makes up the general fund revenues. So the first section is the property taxes, and the 5% increase represented a $231,516 increase. The cable TV fees are estimated to be the same. Our state revenue sharing, we had an increase of 2.7%. So that's about $33,000. This is a slight increase in our administrative fees. Everything else is pretty small. The income from land property sales, we had it at $90,000. We set it at $80,000. We do have some property that's up for sale, so we have that preserved in the budget. The last item is the use of prior year resources in order to balance the budget for this year -- for next year. So that amount is $261,307. And that is due to four major one-time expenses that are in the budget. The costs, the remaining costs for the toll bridge engineer of $220,000, the toll bridge consultants of $20,000. We have -- we're going to have a retirement in our community development department, so that's the severance pay of $20,000. And the conclusion of the master plan and that net amount of $14,600 is the remaining cost of $44,600, less the grant of $30,000 that we're going to be receiving. So the total of those four items are $274,600. So the reason that we're using prior year resources are very specific one-time expenses. The next slide takes our general fund revenue of -- budgeted revenue of $7,522,657 and breaks it down into the categories and shows the percentages. So our highest level of funding is from property taxes, which is 59%, followed by state revenue sharing, which is 17%, which makes up 76% of our total general fund budget. The other item categories are all smaller and very consistent from one year to the next, and they're all less than 10%.
Teresa?
Yes.
If you go back to the -- and just as to property taxes, that breaks down to the general fund's millages and the police millages?
Correct. It's everything that's currently in the general fund, which is the general fund, the general fund allocated millage, and the police millages.
So the people, just so they understand that that is not all the millages?
Correct. This is -- we're just focusing on the general fund right now. On the next slide, it breaks down our general fund expenditures, and only the general fund of the same amount, because we do have a balanced budget. The greatest area of expenditures is for the Police Department and the 33rd District Court, which makes up 60% of that $7.5 million. The next highest area of spending is in the administration. That makes up 18%. And every other department is less than 10%. In fact, after a community development of 7%, everything else is less than 5%. The next slide shows a historical comparison of budget versus actual just for the general fund expenditures. So you can see that we're generally, except for 2011, we are very -- always very close to our budget and our actual spending. And over the course of the 13 years, a majority of the years, we were under budget via a small amount. And this only goes to 2023, just to show you the history, because that's the last year that was completed. We're still in the 2024 year. It hasn't been audited yet, so that's why that's not on there. The next slide is for the general fund. It shows the history of compares our revenue expenditures and fund balance from 2014 through this current budget. If you look at the 2023 column, that is the last year that we -- that is complete. So the fund balance is actually 36% of the township's expenditures. And 2024 is still estimated, because we're not complete with 2024 yet. But with the usage of prior year resources in both this year and next year, we would still be estimated to be within 26% to 30% of fund balance. And the recommended minimum fund balance in the industry is about 10% to 15%. So we're well above that. So in summary, for the general fund changes, the total general fund budget increased by just under $405,000, which is an increase of 5.69%. That is consistent with the increases in the general fund budget over the last several years. We talked about the various general fund increases. I think I covered everything in there. And then the revenue includes the usage of prior year resources of $261,307, which again is to cover planned one-time expenses. So after the 2024-25 years, 25-year, we will not have those. And then now I'm going into the various departments and just providing the highlights of the budget increases. The township -- for the Township Board Department, the expenditure increase of $12,384 is attributable to additional conferences and workshops and computer purchases, due to the fact that we have an election of the Board in November, and we'll have new Board members. The changes in the Township Clerk's budget and the Communications Department, $32,500 of that is due to the fact that the Communications Director's salary was never put in the Communications Department. So the deputy clerk's -- the ins and tire salary was put in Clerk's office. It was what's more appropriate to put in the Communications Department. So you'll see the Township Clerk's budget go down, and a portion of that is due to moving the percentage of the salaries and benefits to the Communications Department. And for the same reason, you'll -- that's part of the -- that's the main reason for the change in the Communication Department. The $21,600 increase in the Treasurers' Office budget is due to increases in the budget for bank charges and in the natural, normal cycle of computers and for the purchase of two new computers. With the -- Building Maintenance and Grounds budget decreased $30,600, and that was due to the removal we had in the current year budget. We had HVAC replacements for this building, so we're not going to have that in '24, '25. The Police Department increase of $168,000 is the combination of a few major items. It's the result for reinstating the 23rd position in the department. There were two people that either resigned or retired earlier in this year. Only one of them was replaced. This is doing -- this is taking care of that final replacement to get them up to the normal 23rd position. But there's also people that are newer employees that are in the Police Department, so their wages are lower, and some of their -- that results in some of their benefits being lower. So the -- if you look at the budget, the net increase in full-time salaries for the Police Department shows an increase of $30,465. That's the culmination of everything. The contract increases, the 23rd position, plus the difference with the salaries because of staffing changes. Also, we established a $50,000 budget for severance pay. Our Police Department has our largest number of employees, and we also have some retirements coming up. So there wasn't in the budget any kind of -- any amount for if someone -- if they retire sooner than expected, or if they resign and they have a payout of their unused sick time. And then the retirement cost was a budgeted increase of about $100,000 for the year, based on the actuarial reports from MERS. The Community Development Department increase of just over $58,000 is due to the -- we have -- again, there's an employee that's retiring, so most of that is due to the severance pay and the continued health insurance and retirement benefit costs associated with that person. The health insurance and the retirement still continue for that individual, so that's an additional expense, because with the -- you're going to have the replacement for that person, but you basically have the benefits for an additional person, and salary market adjustments. The net increase of $119,200 in professional services is attributable to the final toll bridge engineering fees of $220,000. The Board approved the contract for $320,000. We estimated that we would be using $100,000 of that this year, so that's the remaining $220,000, and less reductions in the financial consulting fees of $112,800. We had budgeted $125,000 during the year for the toll bridge consultant. We are only right now at about $30,000, and we're estimating about $20,000 more for the year, so we were able -- that's where that sizable reduction came from. And then the general expenditures is the increase in retiree health insurance and retirement costs for administrative retirees. And with the retirement of the prior Finance Director, we have her costs, retirement and health insurance costs moved to that department. The next slide is a graph from MERS. This is based on our actuarial report as of December 31, 2022. It assumes a rate of return of 7%, and it is different from last year. I know this graph was used in last year's presentation. The small dip between 2022 and 2027 wasn't there last year. It was more of an upward angle. The -- MERS is estimating that we are -- our current funding is 63% as of December 31 of '22, and they estimate that our funding will go down slightly over the next few years, down to 59% before it goes up again. But their projections and the projected funding and payments are still set so that we will be 100% funded by between 2040 and 2041. It's just a little different track to get there. And the next slide shows from MERS our estimated annual employer contributions until we are paid off. You'll notice that in the middle of that, we cross -- of the graph, we cross and exceed $3 million. A year ago, that was not the case. So now it will go a little bit above $3 million in some of the years. Once we get to that 2040-2041 mark, then we drop down where we have -- will be 100% funded, but we still have to pay. We only get a break when we get -- when we're 120% funded. So that might take a little while. But these are projections from MERS. We won't get the report as of December 31, '23 until May or June of this year.
And with those payments, the payments will be less, but we'll still be paying. Is that correct?
Correct. So that's my summary of the changes to the general fund. The next few slides are summaries of our other funds that make up the township budget. I'm going to start with the special revenue funds budget changes, and I group them according to the summary that's at the beginning of the budget. So the first area is fire operating equipment and the public safety building. So we have -- there's a -- you can see a change in the third column of figures of just over $2 million. They have a lot of exciting things happening this next year in their fire equipment fund. They'll be taking delivery of a new aerial fire truck, which is just over $1.8 million. They have ordered a new ambulance. It may or may not come in in this next fiscal year. They actually estimated more like two or three years, but we did budget for it just in case. In the public safety building, they're budgeting for a new HVAC system. And in their fire operating budget, also, their payroll and benefits are higher because they're getting more volunteers for the volunteer fire department. because they're, they're getting more volunteers, volunteers for the volunteer fire department to meet their demands. The drug law enforcement funds, funds, so we have, we currently have three forfeiture funds. One is federal, which is for the US Marshal, one is state, and one is for the US Treasury. So the total of all those is that one line item, and it's, there's the, you'll see in the amended budget on Monday that they received $1.1 million in back forfeiture money. That money can't be budgeted for. We can, we'll have to do budget amendments to recognize the spending they do during the year. The only thing that's in this, in the budget is the DEA officer's salaries and benefits. And as they start doing projects to, to supplement their operations, that's when we'll present budget amendments to the board. The next area is called our, kind of referred to our leisure activities in the budget, recreation, farm, library, and block grant. The total overall increase in those funds was $186,640. Working with the recreation director even for this year, we had to do quite a bit to correct the budget that, that was, that we were operating under. There were items in there that, that were like carryovers from the prior years that didn't belong there anymore. People were not quite in the right departments, and so that's the, there's some increases. And there's some ups and downs throughout the various departments in recreation. So in recreation, as far as the golf course, there's, and they're increasing activity. So there, in the budget is included increases for the green fees and the, and the family passes. For the marina, there's anticipated increases for the summer and winter dockage. We can't meet the demand, and our, and the recreation director found that our prices were, were lower and that they, they should have been increased. We had, and also the cost of the new tenant in the restaurant. We're putting in new equipment. And, and the pool is, is pretty stable, and keep the budget as it is, and hopefully be able to see an increase in activity with what the recreation director is doing. So currently, the golf and marina cost centers support the pool and the restaurant activities. So part of the, the increases in the budgets are due to the fact that we're recognizing how much in each cost center is being used to support another cost center, and how much that cost center is getting as well. So we had, we are showing a transfer of $44,486 into the, the pool activity center, and for Waters Edge, $53,700. And those are coming from the other areas of activity.
But it's all within rec.
I'm saying, but it's all within recreation.
It's just moving things around.
Correct. The, the farm and the library and block grant, those were all pretty, pretty consistent. No, no major changes. Most of it was in the recreation department. The block grant was the same at $20,000. And the, the ARPA funds, so this is a new fund for the township. It actually, this fund was established during the audit for the year ended March 31, 2023 by the auditors. In the, prior to that, the funds had been put in the escrow account, which was not in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards and, and fund accounting. So it was moved into a special revenue fund. And so you'll see with the budget amendment that's proposed, provided on Monday. That's why the '23, '24 column says proposed, because currently that fund doesn't have a budget for this year. But the '24, '25 amount is the estimated amount that we, we believe will be left to spend, and all the COVID funding does have to be spent by December 31 of 2025. The open space.
I'm sorry.
Joe asked a question.
Just one question, just so I can understand this. It appears we have about $180,000 left in this fund. That's correct?
That's the estimated amount, yes.
Yeah, it's close.
Yes.
It's very close. So the proposed is what was already spent?
That was what we estimate to be spent in this fiscal year. Money had also been spent prior to '23, '24.
So there's more spending to be.
So we had about $900,000 in funding, and that was spent, some of it was spent in, a little bit in '21, '22, in '22, '23. '23, '24 is what we estimate our spend, total spending will be by the end of the year. So looking at all that compared to the total amount that the township received, we, and plus the interest that that money has been earning, there's about $180,000 left to be spent that we are planning to spend during '24, '25 to complete our spending requirements.
We do have projects that have been, I guess, contracted, but the expenditures haven't been incurred. For example, this building, the HVAC units, that I think was about $150,000, $160,000 expenditure. None of that cost has been incurred yet because they have not been done yet. It's been contracted, they're just waiting on the materials to arrive, so.
So it's not $180,000 that is extra. It's already been spoken for, it just hasn't been spent yet. Hasn't, there hasn't been a, a bill for it. So we approved the schedule to spend it all on various projects. Not all those projects are complete. Some of them will be completed in this coming fiscal year. That's the $180,000.
Okay, just so I know, so it isn't correct in my thinking that we have $180,000 that's not spoken for?
No.
No, it is, yeah, it just hasn't been spent yet.
That's right.
I got it. I just want to know if there, yeah, what the total is left from the spending, but it's not through yet. So actually, it's zero.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have zero left.
I got it. I understand, I want to make sure I'm right with the accounting on it.
In fact, with the state revenue sharing, we do get a very small increase in it. I had to fill out, complete a form and submit it that certified that we had obligated all of our funding by December 31 of '23. And we'll get that small amount. So everything's been obligated, everything's been spoken for, everything's been started. It just, things are not completed yet.
And Joe asked, the interest is also obligated.
Correct, yes, yes, yes. So we keep us, it is held in our Michigan class fund, so it's earning 5.5% interest until we spend everything. And so that just gets added to the total amount that we can spend. For the open space fund, there was a very small change in that fund. There is no tax millage for that fund. We're just using prior year resources and interest income, and so the activity is projected to be $51,500 for, for maintenance of the open space. The next slide is for capital project funds, but also all these funds are supported by tax, tax millages as well. So the Dream and Storm water maintenance, the change is due to some additional projects, primarily along Meridian Road. The, that's just under $50,000. The bike path maintenance, the overall change was about $216,000, and we get property tax money for bike path maintenance, but we also are budgeting to use prior year resources of $300,000 for blacktop replacement. In the road improvement fund, the change is a negative almost $6.5 million. So on the road improvement fund, at the year ended March 31 of '23, you had issued bonds, and the bonds plus the premium on the bonds was about $6.3 million. We've currently spent $5.2 million of that during the current fiscal year. So that, all of the expenses, plus with the taxes, the total expenses from, for the next year are at two point, just over $2.4 million. And it's, so it's using the rest of the, of the bond proceeds as well. On the next slide is the, the component units of our town, of the township. So the, these are, the Brownfield Authority and the Downtown Development Authority are separate legal entities, but that we are responsible for their financial accountability, and they're treated as component units and reported in our financial statements, because if we didn't, it would, it would lead our, our statements would be misleading if we didn't include them. So Brownfield Authority, the, the change is, usually there's not a lot of change. My audit years and looking at the past, there hasn't been a lot of change in activity. But for Brownfield, we had a fantastic improvement made with the Pirates Cove storage facility, so that increased the taxable value of that property of over $170,000. And so we have in the budget some capital improvements, and then because of the taxes increasing, there was a small increase in administrative expense, our 2%. In Downtown Development Authority, overall consistent property tax revenue and overall activity, there's a $20,000 adjustment to wages and benefits in this, in this fund, because in the past, a portion of the community development director's salary is allocated to this fund. The percentage was based on, on work patterns. It was increased from 44% to 50%, and in the past, the only benefit that was ever allocated to this fund was the, the FICA expense. None of the insurance benefits have been allocated, so we made the, the change to allocate the 50% of the entire cost, the director. And that, in the budget is the biggest expenses, the Lions Park improvements is the largest project, project next year, at just over $140,000. So we, the township has two enterprise funds, which means that they're treated more like businesses than fund accounting. The Groseal Municipal Airport and the Department of Public Services. So in the budget, it shows that the airport had an increase of $512,000. So that $512,000 is actually made up of $206,25 of transfers between departments that are in that one fund. So Commerce Park and the Fuel Farms support the airport, and there's also 269, about $270,000 representing the use of prior year resources to cover some additional expenses that we are planning to, on incurring for one-time projects that include the tea hanger building painting, hangar one landscaping, skylights and windows, and a scissorless lift. Those are one, one-time expenditures. So the, the Department of Public Services, the increase is 2 million for, between this year and next year, is $2,777,000. 2.5 million of that increase is due to a federal EPA grant for sewer main repairs, some increases in usage rates for water sewer and refuse to match increases in costs, and $200,000 for the Elba Island Bridge water main repair that's included in the budget for next year.
And in that 200, if you, again, if you please go back, yeah, the 200, is that for moving utilities?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. We're not, we're not doing any bridge work, but when they, when they, I think they'll probably find it in every bridge that they, that Wayne County works on, they're going to find that we're going to have to move some utilities that are close to the bridges. So that's what that is.
And the last slide of my presentation is our bond debt summaries. So we have a lot of, you know, positive changes in the, for the general fund, the bond payments for the township hall. The bond matures in, in about 10 days. The final bond payment is on April 1 of 2024. So that $194,200, we will not have that expense in the general fund after the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. The same thing applies to the, the bond for Water, the Waters Edge Restaurant in the recreation fund. The bond matures at the same time, April 1 of 2024, so that's about $46,000 of expenses that the recreation fund will not have after the next fiscal year. For the Department of Public Services for the water system, our 2024, 2025 payments will be $955,000. That is made up of four bond issues that mature from 2025 through 2040, and the 2025 amount is 100, out of that 955,000 is 194,500. So after this next fiscal year, the, the total payments for the year will decrease by just under $200,000. For the Department of Public Services sewer system, we are, our current annual payment is just over $766,000, and that's made up of four bond issues maturing from 2026 to 2045. So we have just a little bit longer in order to start seeing a difference on those. The state revolving fund for the, the judgment bond, the annual payment is $583,565, and that bond will mature in 2027. And the state revolving fund for the SSES debt, our total payment for the next fiscal year is just over $1 million. There were three phases to that, that bond. Phase two matured in 2024, so this current year was the last payment for phase two, and that was $1,193,000. And that's, phase three will mature in 2025, so the, the next year's payment is the last payment on that bond as well. And I was here when those expenses were being incurred. And so that's my presentation.
I, if I can, if we can go back to the recreation fund there, I know you were on the right page, I just wanted to go back up. So the, the bond debt summaries.
Oh, the bond, okay. Oops.
The, the Waters Edge Restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Number of years ago, the general fund took that, that payment over, not the, the Waters Edge. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but general fund has been paying that, not Waters Edge.
Oh, they're correctly, yes. Oh, they're correctly, yes.
So the, it's, the restaurant, the bond on the restaurant will end, the General Fund will, will see one less payment.
Correct.
So I just wanted to be clear on that. Somehow we took the, General Fund took the, the payment and left the revenue over in the rest.
Correct.
So, so that'll be, that'll be a help for General Fund. All right. Board members, which, which, by the way, the two board members are missing, I know. So that's why there's only the five of us. Board members, any questions for Teresa on the, on the budget?
I'll go quick to start. I'm, I'm actually surprised how low the, the levy number on the mills is for 2024.
What, yeah, what, what slide or page are you on?
This is, I guess, page number three. So, yeah, last year's levy was almost 16 mills, and it looks like we're going to be down to 14 mills this year. I was surprised by that because I remember the police presentation had the 1.1 mills having us go over this year what we were last year, so I don't know, I just misunderstood that, but I just, I don't know, I think it's a good thing. People will get some tax relief this year, it looks like, right?
Well, I, I think that's because of the, the, the bonds dropping off, where, will also be the millages dropping off.
Correct.
So, do you see that, that?
Yeah, totally.
That, so I think the net effect is the less.
S, S.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I saw that, I just was surprised at how low it went, because I, I remember the 1.1 mills that we were hoping to get was going to bring us over this year what we were last year, if I remember correctly. But if, you know, looking at this number, we, we would have still been under if, if that 1.1 millage had passed.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. And, and in talking to that, I don't think that was talked enough, that there are, part of, part of actually any millage that we've gone for, from the roads, fire, police, was with the idea that there are millages dropping off. So the net effect to the taxpayers out there, they wouldn't, they might see a new millage, but they won't see a difference in their, necessarily in their actual payments or millages, I should say, because payments probably will change. Go ahead, Kyle.
That was the main, that was the main thing I noticed, I want to put out there. And I also, I did have a question about how, how some of the different funds are categorized. Like what's, like, I know some are capital project funds, some are special revenue funds, like, is there a reason why some are that over the other? I mean, some make sense, but like, would fire equipment be a capital project fund instead of a special revenue fund, or is it, that just comes all together under the fire department?
Actually, the three funds that are listed as capital project funds are special revenue funds. It's a, it's how it was divided on the budget in the past, and I just kept it that way for this time because they are, the way they get their funding is through property taxes, and that's, what covers the expenses. But the activity in those three funds that are listed as capital project, our capital project in nature and what they're spending it on, I think that's why, that's how it was categorized, and I just kept it that way this year.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Yep.
That's it, Kyle?
And, sorry, yeah, one more while I'm at it.
Go, go ahead.
MERS, if we pay more now, which I know we can't really do, does that make our payments go down, like, would, would it, would it bring, bring us down, like, quicker, or how would that work if we paid over what we, what we're asked to pay?
The answer is maybe.
Maybe, yeah, gotcha. We don't know.
Asset value goes down, our cost goes up, regardless of how much money you throw at it.
Gotcha. So like, there's no way to tell if like, hey, 10,000 here would help us, $100,000 down the line or something, you can't really, can't really tell that.
Yeah, only if everything else kept on an upswing, the, and they were making money, then it would help. If they lose money, you still would owe. So, that's why if we leave it to them and what they tell us to pay, it really is the best, because they make those adjustments year to year, and, and thus, you know, if, if there is that fluctuation, we haven't overpaid or underpaid, we're, but we're on. And, so, yeah, with that, with that defined benefit, you're almost never at an end unless you terminate the plan.
In fact, if you look at the actuarial report for this current fiscal year, they projected that our monthly payment would be approximately $150,000. Every month since I started with the township, it's been about $155,000. It's based, it's based on the payroll. And so we have overtime and changes, so, and we're coming up to when they'll have the actuarial report done for December 31st of '23. But it's, you know, it's a projection, and, and what reality is, should line up, sometimes it doesn't, but it's been consistently in the 155 range, and not, not 150. So that makes a difference as well.
Gotcha, thank you.
Uda?
Dave?
Joe?
Nice presentation, and.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Okay, since there's, you know, just wait for Jamison here.
Pardon my turn.
Do you have any, any, not to rush you, just sitting down, but do you have any questions on the budget?
Nothing thus far. I mean, I know we, we looked at it previously, is there?
Right.
I missed the change of, summary of change, is there any, anything significant that's changed?
I'll let you summarize those various changes from when we had our, our budget study session.
So the, that's okay, that's all right. The, the changes from the study session, there were some minor changes throughout the funds because of the final information I received for '24, '25 for our retirement costs, and they were higher. So in most cases, we just shifted some costs around, and the total for most of the funds were, didn't change.
Okay.
The only place it did is in the general fund because of the amount for the police and the, the general administration because of the retirees. So there was about a $12,000 increase in the budget for the general fund, and then the only other fund, the airport commission did not have a meeting until Monday of this week, and so after that meeting, there were some changes. We removed the, for Commerce Park, we removed the use of prior year resources of 130,000 because the operations actually can, can support the cost of that tennis roof, and that, that changed the amount that was being used to support the airport. So the airport had an additional amount that it was using of prior year resources.
Okay, yeah, it looks, I mean, it looks like pretty small changes and all in the right direction, so, okay.
DPS had a few minor changes as well, but they were very insignificant.
Yeah, pretty much what we saw at the, at the study session is what's, what's here with those minor changes. Other comments by the board, questions? With none, we'll move to, I'll open the public hearing, usual three minutes, name and, name and address. The way this will work, come up, make your comments. Teresa will be taking, taking your comments down. When we have all the comments, we'll close the public hearing. We will review the comments and make comments on them if, if appropriate, and then we'll have final comments from the board. All right, with that, the public, public hearing is open.
Derek wants to say something.
Yes.
Mr. Supervisor, really quickly, if you do have specific comments about items within the draft budget, if you can refer to the page number on your question, that would help for us to understand, I think, better what the question is and where to find the information you're referring to.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane. So, first of all, Mrs. McLaughlin, this was an awesome, excellent presentation. I don't think we've seen anything as, this is excellent, thank you very much. And what I wanted to mention is, if you look at this investment report for the ending, ending February of this year, it shows 1.2 million in the drug law enforcement forfeiture account. It shows, and I think you mentioned these state forfeiture amounts, and the total, or the.
Treasury.
Treasury, for a total of 1.4 million dollars. And what I'm wondering is, I know that you've mentioned that you can't budget those amounts, but I think citizens and taxpayers would like to know or understand how that money can be used, and what's the plan for the money going forward. It is money, if I'm correct, is, it is money that can only be used in the police department?
Correct.
Okay, so that money, and it is restricted in how it can be spent in the police department in many times, many ways. So how, or what is the plan for the money? What's the use of the money? And how quickly or how slowly will that money be budgeted to do whatever it's able to do within the parameters of forfeiture money? Question number two is, and you mentioned the MERS pension, and I don't know whether MERS and healthcare are both very large parts of our budget, the township's budget. What I'm wondering is, could you talk about what our regular payment to MERS is each year, and how much the catch-up amount is for the MERS and the healthcare budget monies, and how that affects the, the total money that the township has to spend? You mentioned one, about $150,000 a month, is that, and, does that include our current amount we need to put in plus the catch-up? And if we look at the chart, it looks like at one point, we're going to have to pay $5 million a year. I, I don't know whether that's, that's the right way to say that, but could you talk about what the trend is as far as it's, how it's going to affect the budget, how it's going to affect what we're able to do in other departments as, as that amount increases or the need? And lastly, over the last four years, we, citizens have been requesting a narrative to accompany the budget line items over the last four years. Will there be a narrative that accompanies the final budget draft? And historically, what we have seen, and this year, the budget is much easier to follow, the budgets have been basically a generic spreadsheet for each department with no, or very little narrative information. And what I'm hoping or asking for is that we could do a citizens' budget, and what that would be is, be, giving the public a, a budget that is accountable, accessible, readable, easily digested by anybody, by any person, whether regardless, a budget that regardless any person without knowledge of local government or technical expertise could pick up and understand. The budget this year is, is very, very, much better than, than we've seen at different times, but it still is very difficult for the average person to pick it up and understand what exactly is going on. The other part of that, too, is we're, we have capital improvement section or plan. I don't know that we have a capital improvement plan that the Michigan Treasurer's Office suggests that we do a five or six-year capital improvement plan that does an inventory of what we need, what's needed, or what we expect to need over the coming years. I think that's a very important, you know, after we've looked at situations where items have gone, haven't been paid, we just have put, put things off as a township. For instance, the air conditioning in this building or the painting of another building. So would, is it possible, or we would like to, I would highly recommend that we put together a capital budget, improvement budget that goes out over a six-year period, which includes all the properties, assets in the township, and what their replacement costs or maintenance costs would be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Zalasko, how are you, sir?
How are you?
Okay.
This one, Derek?
Yes. Got it.
Before I clear up.
I really appreciate the board doing this, this public hearing. We've talked about it, talked about it, how it should be done, when we didn't have enough information to understand what was going on. Teresa, you did one heck of a job. It's very impressive, very professional. The detail that you put into this, I mean, it's, it's, it helps understand so much better what's going on with this budget. My compliments, you did a great job. I just had a couple things, and maybe I have to come talk to you. What I'm looking at here is the salaries for the police department, page 25 on the draft, and I know they got a 3% increase, and you've got 1.91% that you added. Now, I understand how you did it. There's four non-union people, four non-union people in the department, so you subtracted that from the 22, you come up with 18, I come up with 19%, so I understand that. And I didn't at first, but now I do. The other thing was, and I may come talk to you and get a better understanding of this, I'm sure you have an answer, but number two, what I'm trying to do here is find more money for the police department. Dougie. Okay, the police department increase of the 168,000, we're referencing the 168,000, but that also includes benefits, does it not?
Correct.
But yet, then we come back and we cross-reference the 30,465 that we put in, and that's salaries only, correct? And, and maybe I have to come talk with you, I'm just, I understand this is comments only, but.
I think we're waiting until after all the comments are done before we answer questions.
Okay, okay, that's fine. But what I'm, what I'm trying to find out here, and I understand the reduction in salaries of the new people that we hired, because I know they're making less money, probably about five people. I understand all the verbiage here, but when I look at the 168,000, which includes benefits, and. here, but when I look at the 168,000, which includes benefits, and then I reference back to the 30,000, which we put in the budget that references salaries only, I get a little confused. And you probably have an answer for that, and you can educate me.
This is bullet two, you're questioning bullet two on that general fund somewhere.
Correct.
Yep.
I'm just, what I'm trying, as I said, what I'm trying to see, if I can find some more money for the police department here. Okay?
We'll have it, we'll have it, we'll get an explanation of that bullet.
All right. Again, fine job, very professional. One suggestion, you put a nice document together like this. I learned this, too. You might want to number the pages, so that when people call it, when they reference it, they can say page so-and-so, because you've got so much information in here.
Actually, I tried, and then I didn't like how the page numbers looked and what it covered up. So, I, something I'll work, I'll work on next time.
It was pictorial, right? It didn't have-
I'm sorry?
It was pictorial, you didn't like the way it looked?
Yeah. We'll work on that. You, but you, you appreciated and liked the way this is being done?
Very much so. This, this was very, very professional and very, it was very impressive. A nice job. I mean, you answered a lot of questions with this document that I, I mean, I don't even have to ask. So, very nice job. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Other comments? Seeing none, we will, oh, oh, I guess we do. Hey, Greg, how are you?
Greg Carmes in Easter. I just wanted to thank the board for holding this hearing and, and recognize the fact that I believe that this is the first time, at least since I've been paying attention, which goes back years, that the township has actually had a budget hearing like this, specifically in compliance with the state, state law, which you might recall back in 2022, the Gross Oil Taxpayers Association sent a, a letter to the board from, from the legal counsel that we've been consulting with, explaining the budget hearings of Local Governments Act, and the requirements to provide the full detailed budget to the public in advance of the hearing, and, and allow for a hearing where questions could be asked. So, I would just like to recognize all the members of the board, you, Mr. Supervisor, and your role in making this, this happen. And I'm, I'm very pleased that this is real good progress, and, and I think there's a lot of, of information here that by having this hearing will help to better inform the public and, and hopefully lead to more consensus on, on how to appropriately fund the township's operations. And I also thank our, our new finance director for the presentation. There's a lot of information in there that I, I think I've, I've, I've never seen in this format before. It's, it's much more detailed and, and descriptive than, than past presentations. So, again, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Greg.
Jim, I did find, or, I, I did find a question I wanted to ask. I don't know if I can do it during the public period.
We'll be coming back, we'll be coming back to the, to the board. Anyone else in, in the public? If not, I will, would like to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing card is closed. We'll come back to the board. And Jamison, since you said you had a question, we'll let you go, hang, go first.
Teresa, this is probably my own ignorance, so, or maybe I missed part of the presentation with my tardiness, but on, it looks like slide three, it says estimated tax revenue. Down at the bottom, 10,755,055,976. So, $10 million revenue. But then, when I flip over to general fund budget, it looks like 7.5 million. What fund is the other 3.2 million in?
So, it's all of the special revenue funds, which is the library, drainage, recreation, fire operating, fire equipment, road maintenance. It's also the judgment bond, the SSES.
Okay.
And bike path maintenance.
So, which fund then, so what, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to break this down for me. Thanks, Dave. So, it looks like there's a total amount of 10.7 million in tax revenue coming to Gross Oil Township.
Tax collections.
Tax collections.
Correct.
Which components of these are not in the general fund pie chart?
The ones I just listed.
Okay, so you said police?
No, no. So, it'd be probably easier to say which ones are.
Okay.
So, in the general fund would be police. The, the first one that expires in 2026.
Okay.
Then there's the second police that expires in 2027. The police that expired in 2023, that's up for renewal.
Okay.
The general fund, which expires in 2031. And so, what this does not include is the allocated general fund millage of 1.85 mils. That's just not reflected on this particular slide. This is our actual-
So, that's a, that's a representation of the actual account?
Fine, I take that back. That's the, that's, I'm sorry, I misspoke. That's the, the general fund for 2030, 2031. And, and there's that one, and then the allocated millages on here, 1.85.
Okay. Okay. So, if I wanted to, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about it, I'm, I'm not thinking about it like a member of the township board. I'm thinking about it like a guy sitting out in the audience who's like, you know, we give them 10.7 million. I want to see a pie chart of 10.7 million, right? And I see what you did with general fund, and I think that makes a lot of sense from a fiscal management perspective. I'm just trying to math it up a little bit to see, like, total. So, I guess I could probably work out those numbers on the backside. I was just curious about that. So, I think that's my only, my only question.
The other thing, you had cited 7.5 million versus the, I think, 10.5 million. So, of that 7.5 million, only a certain portion of that is actually tax collection. So, if you refer to the, the pie chart that shows the income for general fund, there's other revenue sources that make up that 7.5 other than taxes.
I see. Okay. That's why I wasn't, right, fees and permits.
State revenue.
Okay. All right, all right. That, that makes more sense.
Other than property.
All right, thank you.
I think, James, I think you're right. Not, not for the budget presentation, but just in general, like a pie chart of where all the tax funding go, tax money goes, I think would be helpful for the public to see. I did have a question also, again, on the mills. I'm looking at the, the proposed levies versus the mills authorized, and the only ones that have a proposed levy that's under what's authorized are both the fire equipment fund and the recreation fund. Is there a reason that we're not levying the, the full authorized amount with those two?
Restate your question.
Sure. So, in, in 2024, the proposed levies versus the mills authorized, all of them were, were levying the full amount authorized, except for about in the middle, there's the fire equipment mill, millage and the recreation millage, where we're levying just a little bit under what's authorized. And I was just wondering why that, why that might be the case.
Probably because of headly reducing that from what it was in the previous year.
Well, I know on the, on the library.
Yeah, you're right. We are levying less on the library.
The library started with a .4, was reduced down, and we don't need, we didn't need to meet our library obligation. We didn't need all of it in a .3.
Yeah, he's not asking it. He's not asking, he's, he's, right.
But I thought it was, it's the library as well.
You're right. Library is one that we don't levy the full amount. That's another one.
And we, that is us not doing it.
Yeah.
That one is us not doing it. The, the question is, for fire equipment, it's, the authorized is 4.9, and we're, we're proposing 4.8, where the rest of them were, were, the proposed and, and authorized are the same.
It's the same as 2023.
And I think, and road, too, actually, is a little bit less, too. That's another one. But the rest of them, I'm anticipating.
Road is 14.
Road is 14.
Roads.
The road, right about fire equipment, the 2031?
Oh, the road maintenance.
Yeah, road maintenance. Sorry, yeah, 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 sorry. Yep. Those are the three where, anyway.
Why, do we know why the, the authorized are less than, the, the authorized and the proposed are not the same?
So, if you look at the actual 2023 levy, and the proposed 2024 levy, there was a slight rollback for going, for 2023. There, the assessor's office does not anticipate any additional rollback for 2024. So, those, the .4869 is actually identical for both years.
Right.
But it's, and at some point, I, with, before I started here, something happened.
So, that's why those are different than the authorized?
It's different than the authorized, yes.
So, I, I guess the question would have to be answered by the assessor's office.
Okay. I got you. Yeah. Yeah, I'm cool not levying the full amount. I just was curious why those were under, where the other ones weren't. Yeah.
Anything else?
Not on purpose.
Yeah.
Do you want to handle the questions that, the, from the public hearing?
For the-
I can help you with that if you want. I've taken some notes as well.
Okay.
I guess the first question was drug forfeiture amounts, 1.4 million. How can that money be?
I see him. I see him.
I didn't know if you saw it.
I, I, I already told him to hold on.
He was doing horse shack back there.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Derek.
Okay. How can that money be used, and how can it be used going forward? How, how do we, how do we qualify the expenditure, and how slowly or how quickly will that money be budgeted to be used?
That's it, that's on you to call.
We have the question. Now, we'll have the answer. Hi, Doug.
Hi. I'll try to explain this best I can and answer your question, Mr. Flavin, best I can. I'm going to try to go in order. I'm, I'm running off of sheets that were printed on March 1st of 2024, so it could be a little bit different in currency. So.
Can you raise the microphone a little bit?
While we cut the budget.
So, if you look at these three documents, and this goes off, which Mr. Flavin had posted up earlier, like I said, this is March 1st, but a little bit different here. So, I want to explain the balances. I want to explain what they're used for, and then budgeting versus not budgeting for forfeiture. So, the top one, you see there's the federal drug enforcement. That is a type of forfeiture that comes in, that's from basically drug seizures for our officer, it's a DEA. I'm going to get into why that number's so big now versus in the past. And then, maybe you can answer some of the questions there. The bottom one, second one is state forfeiture. That's how the money is seized, either through a federal forfeiture using the US Marshals, or through, when the officer or the agent seizes it through the state prosecutor's office. That's a different avenue, avenue for how the money goes. The third one is treasury. So, that money, we, we don't really inject money into the state forfeiture anymore for seizures. So, that's kind of a, I don't want to say debt account, but it doesn't really go up that much besides some interest and some minor payments coming out of it. Treasury is from a case that was done in 2005 and 2006, that the IRS seized the money, not the marshals, not through the state, and that was through the IRS. Federal and treasury have different rules on what it can be spent on. Do you guys understand me, follow me so far?
Do, when you say federal, and federal has theirs, treasury has theirs?
They have different rules on what it can be spent on.
Both of them have different rules.
For example, I, we call the federal, the federal and treasury, they're both federal. We always call it the federal drug money that comes from DEA, the marshals. You cannot use that to pay, besides the position that's funded by the DEA position. I'll get to that in a moment. You can't pay the remaining employees overtime, benefits, salaries out of that, which is a big cost to our budget. So, we can't pay that. We can pay equipment. You cannot pay new construction. If you wanted to put an addition on the building, we cannot use that money to pay for that. Treasury, you can, as you see, we have a limited amount. We do have a plan for that. We just got to figure out the plan. We got to figure it out. We're trying to work on that right now. So, with that being said, is there any questions on that part of it? On, on just the balances from March 1st? So, so how do we get here? How do we get to those balances? I'm going to go to the big one, which is the federal one that was the one point, the 1 million.
I think it's not so much each one. It's a matter, okay, well, how can you, the question was, how can you use them?
I'm, I'm going to get there.
Yeah.
I have a list. I just want to, I kind of want to get to it here. So, on this right here, this is, sorry for my notes. You'll see in 2021, that's when we took off, is we had 78,000 in the federal forfeiture. That number is going to be problematic for us during that year, because we are responsible for paying for the one, the DEA plus one spot I have written down there. When we put a task force officer into a DEA position, a task force position, we are allowed to use those federal forfeiture funds to pay for them 100%, just that one position. So, that's 137,000. The fund that benefits, it's everything. But that balance in that account was 78,000 that year. So, we didn't even have enough money to cover that. So, if you follow the right arrow to the next year, we didn't, we tried to use no forfeiture at all, at least to get some money put back in there. So, so you see the 78,000 carryover, you see the 2, the 246, or the 167 that was retrieved that year to make 246. You get 246 the next year, and you see a seizure that was made about four or five years ago, and what Officer Ferguson had made part of his group of DEA, and you'll see a drop of 788,000. So, that counts for how that money came in. Does that make sense? Do you follow me so far, how the money came in? So, that wasn't like we're sitting on the money, or we're putting it under the mattress. I kind of, I do use that term, but, so now, we had an injection of money, it means we can start trying to use it a little bit better, more, more accountable. So, there's that. That's how we got to where we got to that money. So, right here, I'm just going to fold my notes over, sorry. But this is that funding for that DEA position. So, when we had that 78,000 back in '21, I needed to come up with a little bit less than that, but that amount of money. Our forfeiture account didn't even cover the position, because it was spent, however it was spent. I'm not going to get into that. So, that's, so that's, that accounts for how some of the money's spent every year. So, going into the future, to talk about now that we have this money, what do we do in 2023 with the forfeiture money? If you guys remember, we, we made presentations to the board where we had, we asked for Axon, 167,000. That's forfeiture. That's the federal forfeiture. That's a, that's an expenditure we can use it for. We also applied for a grant. We're going to get 30,000 of that back. We could put that back into the forfeiture. That hasn't come in yet, but we, our policy could be getting it. Remember the Flock system, the, the bridge cameras? 24,000. They went down. You cannot budget, you cannot use forfeiture. If you, if you're a budget, if you get 100,000 in forfeiture this year, you can't lower the budget 100, 100,000. So, we can't lower it 788, or whatever that number was. That's the plan and the budget. You can't do that. They wanted to use it as, as a resource to, for, for needs that are undetermined. So, our camera, our cameras in our cars are falling apart. They still are. We're waiting for Axon. They're about a month behind, or two months behind to get that in there. So, we bought the Axon system. Flock system, the bridge cameras died. We went to Flock. That's 24,000. Bought a couple. We had two printers take, malfunction, 5,000. The DEA spot's 137,000. Do you guys remember, we lost one of our vehicles. We get, we came, one of them hit the pole. That was, that was drug for, that was an unexpected expenditure. 44,000 plus the cost to build the car. So, last year alone, we spent about 139,000 in forfeiture. Let's go back two years ago, we only had 89,000 in the account total for the federal. So, now, we have this large number that Mr. Flavin had addressed. We are going to use it for our needs, but you cannot budget.
It can't be used for your, your normal funding. It has to be for something, to supplement it for something that's unthought of.
When that car got involved in an accident, I don't mean to keep bringing that up, but that's a perfect use for it.
Yeah.
Or when the, our car, our camera system in our cars, it's failing. Since I asked you guys last time, we've had more go down. We can't get Axon to come in fast enough, but we're on our time schedule with them. So, those are the needs. When the Flock system went down.
We couldn't use, in, for instance, if you, you were over budget, you couldn't use it to balance the budget.
No, no.
Couldn't be used that way.
So, treasury, and I think Mr. Jamison, Jamison, sorry, Mr. Here, had brought up last time about uses of it. We talked about treasury, have a very small pot of money. We want to use that to fix, because you can use that for construction, but we have a very limited amount of funds there. So, we got to pick and choose what we can use it on, which we're going to hopefully use it for the generator, working with the fire department. So, then, uh-
And it's key that you always-
And it's key that you always have enough in there that you can fund that officer, right? I mean, that's a big component.
The, the federal forfeiture funds that come in is not solely to fund the officer, but you're right. But is the officer's there to generate funds to help us and help the US government.
You need the officer there to generate the funds.
You need the officer to generate the funds.
That big increase that came in, the seven eighty-eight, that got us to a million dollars. We did spend about three ninety last year of it, but that doesn't mean go hog wild and start buying useless things. We have to manage it, but you don't want it, you can't budget for it, but you don't want to. We have a lot of repairs that you guys have seen, so we're, we have to use what budget money we have and then try to use a balance.
Right. And basically, it is restricted money. You can't just be used any way you want.
We're not hiding a gob of money. It's just we're very fortunate to have that amount. I'm not sure when, sorry to call you on the table there, Joe, but when you were there, I don't know if we ever had that amount of money come in at one time. So but maybe we did. I don't know. No. But it's a balance.
Did I ask you to answer that?
I think to Kevin's point was that you can't budget it, but that doesn't mean you can't, you don't need a spend plan, right? Like you could still have a spend plan with items you want to buy and capital outlays.
That's what the budget's for. That's what the budget's for.
In fact, you couldn't do that.
You can't supplant the township or department's budget, but what you can have is a spend plan, right? I've got one point four million dollars. I intend to spend this much money on these items over the next three years. So you can't exchange it for the township budget, but you can still develop a plan to spend a certain amount of that money, right? Like.
We're not gonna sit on it. I'll just put it that way.
I mean, I, I think the, I think the concern is that, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a one point four million dollar slush fund, right? Like, don't just, so there should be some government oversight. And one of the ways the government could have some oversight is by a spend plan, you know.
In fact.
Or we come to the board and you guys approve those purchases.
Doug, is there, is there, is, does that just stay with you forever or is there a time, time that you have to spend that?
The old rules, they add up to two years, but I don't think, I think that's been withdrawn. They did change the rules and we got the March twenty, twenty twenty-four guidelines, and that's why I brought it last time. But there's, we're not sitting on it.
Yeah.
You have to make, you have to use expenditures in it.
And, and because of the limitations of what you can use it for, you know, I mean, it can't, it can't go for, can't go for a police officer, other than the ones.
Other than the funded task force position. Mr. Flavin, did you have another question?
I think Jameson hit the question.
Okay. Did I answer what you needed or did I cover what you're asking or?
I think that, I think what everybody's looking for is to use Jameson for a spend plan and prioritizing the spend plan. So.
Is spending plan another term for budget?
I think you're missing, I think we're missing the point though, right? We can't supplant the township's budget, right? It doesn't mean we can't make a plan to spend this money. An example, like you said, sure, you can come to the board and be like, hey, board, I need to buy this. Can you approve it, right? Um, but imagine, and I'm not saying you would do this, chief, but imagine a scenario where you come to the board and you're like, hey, I want to spend four hundred thousand dollars on this super whiz bang police thing. It's gonna make the whole township safer. And we're like, yeah, great, buy it, right? And then a month later, you come in and you're like, hey, the roof on the police station needs to be replaced and it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars. And it's like, well, use the, uh, use the forfeiture money. Like, I can't. We spent it last month on the whiz bang thing, right?
I understand.
So a spend plan allows the board to help make the decision on what that money gets spent on ahead of time.
I, I understand. I do understand and thank you, but you see like how we were at seventy-eight thousand and now we have this lump. Like we were able to use that, but I guess it also comes down to trusting your manager that we're not talking about buy two whiz bang things with a revolving light on it. This is, that's.
Well, it's not that I don't trust you. It's just that we're the fiduciary responsibilities here at the township.
Anything over five thousand dollars, we have to come to you guys with it.
And you guys might not have something formal, but I know, or maybe you do, but in admin, you guys have a general idea for where those dollars are going to be spent. A lot of times it's on vehicles as needed, but you also have the unsurety of the fact that this money, you may not get any in in a given year. You might not get any in for in a given two years. So it makes it very difficult to plan that dollar expenditure out because you don't know how much exactly is going to come in and when it's going to drop. Is that an accurate statement?
We went from, I'm sorry if I misquote my own numbers. I'm not looking at my sheet, but they went one sixty-seven one year to seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand next year. It's ebb and flow. I know a couple of years when Joe was there, he got a couple four hundred thousand dollar years in a row and then it went down.
Based upon my previous experience at the police department and my other time that I was here and working with Joe. I mean, it'd always kind of been the policy of the department to have a pretty good idea where that money was going to be going, and I would imagine that hasn't changed.
Without draining the pot.
Right.
So when we came in, we had seventy-eight thousand dollars. That was difficult.
So I think maybe the suggestion is something a little bit more formal than probably the informal plan that you guys have on an ongoing basis.
We have, we have some plans to answer, Jameson. We do have some ideas like the phone system. We have, we're waiting for bids. The generator, waiting for, um, to get to get to the point where bids and then a couple other things, we were talking about getting a Connex box. We're out of storage. That's just an inefficient way, uh, efficient way to use funds to get space, so.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get in your lane or anything. I think if, if you just had like a five item list of like, these are the top five things we, I'd like to buy using these funds. At least then we can see it coming, you know, and, and help provide that oversight that the public feels important.
That was some of the stuff I did in that presentation of the woes and needs of the PD, but not all those items we can fix under forfeiture. But yes, I, we can go with that. That's not, that should not be an issue.
I liked the way you just put that. Spend plan sounds too close to budget to me. I think a prioritized list of needs is a helpful way to do that.
A list of needs.
Nicer way to put that.
Things that it could be spent on. Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Can I ask something?
What you got?
I think the term that most people use is wish list. It's not budget, but it's something that if you ever get the money and you, you have these goals and, and that would be probably the easiest term that we've used that for years.
I think we're all saying the same thing, just using different words.
And it's, it is just literally that list or whatever you want to call it is an internal thing. It's not. Public. It's not.
Did I get everything that you wanted?
Thank you.
Or for the forfeiture funds.
Guys or John, anything?
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Good time.
Thanks, Doug.
Teresa, you want to move to the next one?
So the next set of questions was regarding MERS. Um, our current regular payment is approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a month, which is a little higher than what MERS has had projected for us for this year. And that amount that MERS projected was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. The catch-up payment, I'd have to look back. It's in the, being the actuarial report and or the audit report, I'd have to go back and look. And we don't have the new actuarial report at this time either. The second MERS graph that I presented, the five million dollar payment is based on a five percent rate of return, and that's not what MERS is, is, that's not the assumption that MERS is using for Groseal Township. If you look at that graph, there's a legend and it gives scenarios for seven percent, six percent and five percent rate of return. So they are assuming a seven percent rate of return, so we would be following the dark blue line. The five million dollars was the purple dotted line. At the seven percent rate of return, we peak at about three point three million dollars. Hi, that's all I had.
I think there was another question about, you know, how, how do these obligations impact the overall budget? I mean, through the budget presentation, I think you see that unfunded liabilities or existing liabilities with retiree healthcare or pensions do impact the budget. They're, you know, costs that have to be considered. But what I can say is a lot of the expenditures that are attributed to these, these benefits, the township over the years have, has taken significant measures to reduce those benefit levels to try to limit liabilities. And a lot of the liabilities that we currently have are contractually obligated from previous benefit levels that employees had retired under. For example, the township no longer offers retiree healthcare, but the retiree healthcare that we are funding are benefits that were incurred under previous contracts and previous hires. Also, with the exception of the police department, our defined benefit program has been adjusted to make it comparable or comparable to defined contribution programs. We have a cap on the contribution amount. Anything above and beyond ten percent is the employee's obligation. In addition, the benefit levels as far as multipliers, years of service, things that are factored into the overall compensation have been adjusted drastically over, uh, let's just say ten years ago to try to make it, uh, so that the liabilities are, are, are reduced as compared to in, in previous years. So to answer your question briefly and in summary, these obligations do impact the budget. It's not uncommon with, you know, many organizations that have a long history of existence. I think you can take a look at majority of the local municipalities, municipalities across the state of Michigan. We all struggle with the same, you know, challenge of, of funding these ongoing liabilities. And even if you take a look at the private sector, you see liabilities associated with retirees being a significant cost within ongoing operations. The big three are, are one of the ones that, you know, I can point to pretty easily and, and, you know, those obligations will continue to. But I think that the township over the past, you know, at least five to 10 years has tried to make it a priority, at least in current benefit levels, to reduce any furtherance of those unfunded liabilities through benefit level modifications.
And hopefully, I mean, I know during, during this board's term, we have looked at that and, and that has been something that we, we attacked probably more vigorously than prior groups that came in, and I would think that that would go forward. You just have to be able to keep your, keep your costs in, in check as much as you can.
The other thing is we have to keep in mind competitiveness within the employment market. I think you've probably heard from the police chief that, you know, benefit levels when attracting talent are definitely looked at by potential employees. As well as ability to pay is, is considered when you start looking at negotiations and potential three twelve and whether you would have success in, in making huge cuts to benefit levels. So there's a lot to be considered when you take a look at, at benefit levels. Also worth adding, and I'm probably going on here, but farther than what the question was, the way that the township has to account and other municipalities have to account for unfunded liabilities as it relates to retiree healthcare changed significantly four, five, six years ago, tracking it more like a pension versus a pay-go system that municipalities had normally tracked their unfunded liabilities with retiree healthcare. It wasn't that, you know, Groseal Township wasn't meeting its obligations. It's just the way that the state wanted us to track those liabilities changed and fund those liabilities changed. So we kind of started at ground zero, whereas pension has this reserve, retiree healthcare did not. So that's to be considered as well as we take a look at those liabilities.
Uh, and, and just say that one other thing that we've, we've done is really gone after grants. And because there's been a lot of money out there, there's a lot of money out there now. The federal government's putting out a lot of money for different things. The state and even the county, and we have really encouraged our departments to look for grants that affect them. In fact, there's, there will, hopefully we'll be coming up a grant to attract fire and police and to pay for them, which will be a big help. And, and the idea is this money to actually help retain those people. So competitiveness is, is one of the things, but a big part of our, a big part. We saw a number of adjustments to our employees this year, just to try and keep them competitive with, with other, other communities. So other comments by the board? See none? Motion to adjourn?
I've got a couple more questions on.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. I, I, that's my writing ended with that. Go ahead.
Um, there was a question about, um, a narrative to accompany the budget. There's been a request for a couple of years to provide a narrative. I, I think maybe it also goes along with the, the comment about a citizen's budget. Can we get one that can explain the budget more simply? I, I think the narrative maybe was what I would consider our annual report that accompanied the budget that kind of explained, from what I recall from the last time I was involved, the annual, annual report was within the proposed budget, what are the priorities and what are we addressing? I guess that would be up to the board, whether the board wanted to reinstate an annual report like we had in the past. So that would be a board decision if they wanted to, to do something like that again. And as far as the citizen's budget, I would assume that Teresa and I could probably look into that, trying to make it as simple as possible. Because you're correct, municipal budgets are not easy. You know, there's.
No budgets are easy. You have to have a background in what's going on to understand the budget. But basically, you know, it's revenue minus expense equals either a deficit or, or a profit or an excess. And, but yeah, to really understand, you, you need something. So we will, we'll have the right people look into that to see if we can put something together.
Yeah, we can take a look at, you know, making a very simple budget. But I, I will state that in two thousand and eleven, the state legislature had put in place some conditions, some accountability and transparency conditions for municipalities as a condition of receiving some of our state shared revenue. And that was through the EVIP program that I think everybody probably has heard of. So we are required to provide information to the public about our budget. And we utilize, and a lot of communities utilize a program called Munitrix, which is on our website, which kind of gives a, an overall summary with a lot of graphs and to, to allow residents, I think, a better opportunity to understand the budget and where their money goes. That information is on our website, on our finance department link. So if you go there and you go to Munitrix, you can search different components of our budget. Look at where your money's going, where it's coming from. As a resident, your tax dollars. So that's a resource that residents could go to to hopefully understand better. But I think Teresa and I could probably also look at maybe some other options for a real simplistic, you know, budget summary that the residents could easily refer to.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, what I've seen in other municipalities is like, here's the total amount of tax revenue raised. Here's the total amount of departmental spending. Here's some pie charts and then here's a dollar bill or something like that, right? That, and sometimes they send it on a little card where it's like, for every dollar you paid Groseal Township, you got twenty-two cents of fire, forty-three cents of police, you know, sixteen cents of DPS. And I, I realize that's overly simplistic for what obviously we're doing here with, with what we're doing, but I think it makes people feel good, right?
Well, it makes, something like that, although it might not, it's not, obviously not as in-depth as this. It maybe is somewhat a superficial. They do understand that. And they, yeah, if I got a buck and, okay, twenty-two cents is fire and, you know, fifty cents is police and whatever, airport is only five cents.
I mean, obviously the people that are interested in the deep dive on municipal government show up for the meetings, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, so we'll work on that. Other, other, anything else there?
There was a question regarding the police budget and my calculation for the police wages. So we might have come to the same result, but actually for all of the employees of the township, I have a schedule that lists each employee, the, their wages, what their new wages are based on contract increases, what the new benefits are going to be, which includes all the health, health, dental, vision, MERS. And then I come up with totals and those are the totals that go in the budget. You know, it takes into account the police employees that are on a wage progression. So it includes moving, moving them up as well as the, the annual step increase. And the slide with the, the general fund summary of changes that address the police department. So the total increase in the police department budget was approximately a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. What I try doing with these narratives is, is, you know, there's a lot of. What I try doing with these narratives is, is, you know, there's a lot of pluses, minuses, but typically there's some significant items in each area. And that's what I try to address in the slides. So the total increase for the department was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The, um, reinstatement of the twenty-third position was more than thirty thousand dollars. Um, but the total change, um, was thirty, for just the wage portion line, was thirty thousand, four sixty-five. Plus we added the budget for severance pay of fifty thousand. And we, there was about a hundred thousand dollar increase in retirement. So the total of those three things is a hundred and eighty, eighty thousand dollars. So those are the significant items that changed.
I just want to really emphasize the, the, the twenty-third position here is not, it's not a new hire. It's not, um, anything other than we had somebody retire and it's replacing the person that retired. So that, that's all that that is. Uh, we're not adding a position. Um, if the, if the millage would have gone through, that would have allowed for the adding of a position. Um, but since the millage did not go through, the new millage request, uh, we're not able to add a position. The twenty-third is just to replace that person that retired, um, I think probably some five, six, seven months ago, something like that. And it might be off on that.
And, and the say, the, the, it, it's because it hasn't been done yet. It's, when we say reinstating, it was never taken away, we just haven't replaced them yet.
The police department has been going through trying to find a suitable candidate to fill that position.
Anything else?
Um, there was a question about capital improvement budget for the general fund. Um, uh, for maybe a six-year period, something along those lines. Um, so e- each one of our departments, under our policies and procedures, is to maintain a, a capital improvement fund. Um, some departments, which are maybe a little bit more capital intensive than others like DPS, um, you know, we have fully engineered, um, capital improvement schedules that actually exceed six years. They go out twenty-some years. Um, we're in the process of doing water right now. I know airport, they have, uh, capital improvement schedules, um, that go out 10 years, especially with the airport improvement, um, program. So each department generally has a, a capital improvement schedule. Um, general fund hasn't probably had as, um, as formal of a capital improvement schedule, to be honest, because there hasn't really been a whole lot of money to be able to plan for replacements, um, for improvements, um, because it's been traditionally strapped. Um, there hasn't been a whole lot to plan for. It doesn't mean that there shouldn't be one to identify the need. Um, but that's something that I think we should probably look at in the future to make it a bit more formal than what it has been in the past. So, uh, hopefully that answers that question.
Right, and, and you're right. I mean, uh, even though you may not have the money to, to do it, you need, you know, as, uh, that asset management that's going on over at wastewater treatment, uh, that of course has a capital, uh, improvement, uh, factor in it. And, uh, yeah, knowing, you know, whether, whether you have the dollars or not, you still should know that, hey, you know what? This thing is coming up, its useful life is over. We're, we're going to need to replace it, whether it's this year, the year that you put on it or if it's the next year, now we're on borrowed time, but at least we're aware of it versus waiting, just waiting for it to break.
Yeah, and, and for future planning discussions, uh, funding discussions, you know, those, those capital improvement schedules are obviously very important.
Yeah.
Um, to, to justify the need, right? Um, and also the board to understand, you know, what, what liabilities are out there. So, um, that, that's the full list of questions that I had written.
All right. Uh, again, board, any, any other questions? We'll try this again then.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?